All those in favour? Propose to the translator, Ray?
Yeah.
All those in favour? Thank you very much. Decorations of interest, any display of community interest that you may have is in respect to the items on the agenda. councillor Hopkins has an interest in item 11 which has been granted to this nomination to take part in the discussions and to drive it. Are there any... Don't forget if you do have any change, please inform me to Clark for any changes you may have. Minutes of the meeting of town council on Wednesday the 19th of August. Any comments? Propose to accept? Second? Second for all those in favour? Councillor's questions. I have one question from councillor Brooks. It reads, "At the last meeting, I asked a question related to expenditure above the amount the clerk can currently authorize. Despite being told I would receive an answer, outside the meeting I have not received an answer, therefore I ask the following question: Who authorized and incurred the expense of over £1,000 for tea, sandwiches and cake for the free delivery reception which was mainly wasted?" And the answer, without discussion, "An invoice for £1,051.60 was received from Andy Peeble Catering Services for food at the free delivery event held on Sunday the 14th of June 2015. A verbal quote for catering was obtained by the assistant clerk for £750, which was £3.75 per head for 20 people, in April 2015. However, the final invoice of £1,051.60 includes an additional cost of £301.60 for extra staff, given the additional amount of people that the supplier was informed would be attending, and also extra equipment as the venue, which was Rutherford County Museum, was not able to supply this. Unfortunately, although this was discussed, the cost was not specified by the supplier and took the total of the invoice to £1,051.60. The cheque was signed by councillors Low and Stutz." Okay, chairman and members' reports. I have one very short report. As mayor, I've attended the last band concert of the season at Cuts Close on the 23rd of August when we also had a fun day, which was an excellent day, an excellent afternoon. Unfortunately, it just started to rain towards the end of it, but I think everybody enjoyed themselves and there seemed to be a very good turnout. And then this evening, just being to beat the retreat in the marketplace, another excellent performance by the Parish Regiment Band. I hope that continues for many more years. Pleasure to be there.
Yeah, very briefly, just beginning up there on the, a couple of the committees that working groups are on. There's nothing further to report on the fitness centre because that work is still in the tendering element, so that will come to council in due course. The promotions working group, there'll be a report coming out at the back end of this month with some recommendations for the additional Christmas lights, so that'll be coming through there. I just wanted to focus on the fun day, which was the last band concert of the year. The overall feedback that I've had was that it was very well received, I think that the organisation of it was satisfactory, achieved the aim. We stayed within our budgets, I believe, and there were no issues. And I wanted to put it on record that I want to thank everybody that helped out on the day, all members of the council that helped out, and also some members of the public as well that helped out. And that was it, chairman, unless there's anything else from anybody else on? I was expecting some questions from one of the councillors, but they've not materialised, so I won't pursue that.
I mean, I'd like to say I'd like to thank everybody who organised that event, if it's next Monday. And I hope that we can do something like that every year. It's well worth it. Thank you very much for all of you.
Chair, can I just say, I haven't got a report, but I did attend the neighbourhood watch group at what we now call the community help in Princess Avenue. It was focused on Broadstone Road mostly, so that will be taken by Jasmine. And I think he's forgotten to mention that our day, my chairman, that we all slugged away and we have a bicycle too. We cleared the brook of all the debris, didn't we Jasmine? On Saturday, and thank you for the coffee back there. And it was a good, actually it was quite a fun day, we quite enjoyed it, didn't we?
Yeah, it was lovely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm riding the bike yet. Sorry, I haven't ridden the bike yet.
I think it's been disposed of.
Okay, there's no other reports, have any good advice up?
Thank you, chairman, and you've all got a copy of this in front of you. I'll try and keep this as simple as I can as regards the community infrastructure levy. We also got a notification of this on Friday, that the hearing will be taking place on the 23rd of September. We haven't had the venue yet, I am assuming it will be at Catmas. Now, members will be aware, or certainly newer members, sorry, won't be aware, that Oakentown Council submitted a response in response to a consultation that took place in June. You've got a copy of it there, and it's a request of RCC be sent, that it reconsidered its decision that hotels should be exempted from the community infrastructure levy, et cetera, et cetera. Now, in the response we got on Friday, that is basically it, and that is the words of the examiner. And you've got that there, I won't read it out. But basically, the hearing will be focusing on the viability of Rutland County Council's draft charging schedule. Now, myself, Alf and Adam were all a little bit confused about this wording, so we got clarification of this yesterday from them. Basically, viability means the amounts that RCC are proposing. So, for example, as I said, their housing developers may be objecting to the fact that RCC want to charge them £100 per square metre for each house they build. They may say that they can't afford it, they may have their reasons why, they may have evidence to support that. It will be up to Rutland County Council to produce evidence to counter that argument, and the examiner is there to arbitrate and come to her decision. Now, the fact that hotels have been exempted effectively means that they are going to be charged at zero pounds per square metre, so there is no issue of viability because there is no charge. Okay, so what the examiner is basically saying is there is no point in Oakentown Council going because the fact that hotels have been exempted in the first place is a matter for Rutland County Council and not for her as the examiner. Okay, so the conclusion that we've come to is even though Oakentown Council requested a member be there regarding their response to the consultation, there is no point because it won't be considered. Okay, but just, I'll let you know when I know the venue and the times, but the 23rd of September. Okay, if you've got any further quee... I've tried to keep that as simple as I can, it's quite a complicated one. Again, the issue for the distribution of CIL monies is currently in law, and RCC have to pass down 15% to parish councils. Okay, where any development takes place once the charging schedule is in place. If there is a neighbourhood plan in place, that figure rises to 50%. Okay, let's go on to more easy matters. Just to let you know, watering of flowers is going to stop on Monday, and they'll be starting to be taking those down the following Monday, the 21st. With Alf's permission, I sort of informally contacted the trustees of the Victoria Hall about our lease with them for this office in this chamber. As members are aware, there is only one notice period, and that is 30th of September. Okay, now bearing in mind, the council may be moving to the community help as it seems to have been renamed. That was obviously going to be very, very restrictive. Now, we've had a letter back from the trustee saying they are happy if the council merely gives them six months' notice on a rolling basis, so the council can give that notice at any time. Okay, so for instance, once we've got the plans, the tenders in, the decision's made, obviously if it is going to be too much to move, the council may choose not to, the notice can then be given at that point. We are not bound to the 30th of September, that's. And we've checked with our solicitor, she is happy with that letter, and there's no need to make it any more complicated than that. A reminder, two weeks' time, we've got planning and park, so if you've got anything for that, anything you want to see on the agenda, please let me have, or Alison, your report on that. If you need a report template, we can email that out. Can we have those by Tuesday the 15th, please? Finally, you're all aware that I went on a training course on Thursday, so I'm just sorting my notes out for that, and I'll email those out to everybody when I've got some of it. It is actually quite relevant to some things that are coming up as regards financial regulations and standing orders.
Thank you. Just to expand on the community infrastructure levy, although it's been indicative, not worth our while turning up to give a presentation to the examiner, I asked the clerk to write a letter to the Rutland County Council indicating our position that we feel it is inequitable to have hotels not charged anything where private dwellings are charged at, say, £100 per square metre. So, clerk will be writing to the examiner, and I believe also to Rutland County Council on that day. Okay, deputations by the public. I understand, Mr Ron Womby hasn't... Just to give an indication, the deputations really are for three minutes, okay? And you know the subject you're going to be speaking on, so if you'd like to just keep to that point and give us that deputation now, please.
Mr Mayor, councillors, you're being asked tonight to give retrospective permission to Rutland County Council for the CCTV column that has been erected on Royce Recreation Ground. We, the residents, were a little shocked when we found out that CCTV camera was to be placed on the column. With 360 degree rotation and a range of 120 metres in infrared, 100 metres with the white lights turned on, and 40 metres face recognition, our lives would be on camera 24/7. We have had no consultation or notification from Rutland County Council. We are surely entitled to privacy in our own lives. Who made the decision to place the column here? I would say that it was not for the full potential of the camera, but because there was electricity supply close by. I understand that you have requested a camera that would cover the large tyre swing and the garages due to antisocial behaviour. Due to the limited range of the camera on face recognition mode, a more suitable position for the camera would be either, one, next to the existing telegraph pole, which happens to have electricity supply opposite, or two, behind the basketball hoop. Both positions would offer you as a council more protection against antisocial behaviour, giving you face recognition over your player equipment, and also offer the residents a more small amount of privacy. I have spoken to David Brown, Places Officer, Director, and he did indicate to me that if we weren't happy with it, that he would be happy to either take it down or move it. So in closing, Mr Mayor, I would ask that you refuse permission for the column in this location and seek the relocation to a more suitable and usable position. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr Ron. When we do discuss this item, you will be able to make comments before we vote on it. Those comments should not really go back on what before I said, it should be anything new which crops up. All right, as those four members of the public here, I believe, are all here for the installation of CCTV pole, I'd like to propose that we bring forward that item from item 14 to the next item, which would be item 8. Second, all those in favour? You done? Thank you, Ron. Okay, whilst I was going to give the brief introduction to it, and then I'm going to go to the ward now, but that's all because to...
Yes, obviously, this went in on Friday the 28th of August. I actually got a phone call at home from Mr Tomlinson, who, you've got an email from there. And subsequent to that, it transpired that a report was considered by Cabinet. You've got part of it there with camera 13 listed. This was considered by RCC Cabinet on the 17th of March 2015. Camera 13, Princess Avenue overlooking the park, covering Princess Park, asked for by Oakentown Council. Now, I have been back and I can find absolutely no record whatsoever that Oakentown Council has formally requested this camera to be there from Rutland County Council. So, the situation on the 28th was that they were going to erect it across the road, I think, on the corner of Princess Avenue and Westfield Avenue. Realised they were unable to do so because of too many underground services, and Mr Tomlinson took the decision on the day to put it on Royce's on the mistaken belief that Royce's planning field was owned by Rutland County Council. So that's where we are now. Members may be aware that services have now been put to that camera pole across the road. I believe that happened Saturday, last Saturday. So that's the situation, it is where it is, and it's up to members really to discuss the way forward.
Thank you, gentlemen, I'll disconnect, so if you're making comments, I'll have to put it all back in again. It's more or less what Richard has said, really. I'm doing it for the pole and against the pole. For why it should be retained, or why it's there in the first place. Many complaints have been received over the last three years, four years, about loud noise, graffiti, drug-taking, foul language, after dark drinking and vandalism. And I've witnessed the vandalism, I've also witnessed, and with the clerk's help, had the graffiti, which was obscene, removed. The tyre swing is costing a lot of money. I have got photographs of Hughes actually monkey fashion getting up the stanchions, pulling the tyre swing over so that it doesn't allow the owners to use the tyre swing. And when it was a fitness centre, the gentleman at the fitness centre pulled it back for them so it could be used. Since that's been vacated, we've had to get contractors in to pull the tyre swing back. The wet paw is regularly picked out with some sharp instrument, I don't know what it, how they do it, and the wet paw is moved all over the place, and I've found wet paw right across at Chivvy Post. That has to be replaced because it's a hazard for the children, and that is costly. Last Monday, I attended the neighbourhood watch. So at about quarter past nine, I think, Adam, was it about we finished, it was dark. I walked down Princess Avenue. The last lamp post on Princess Avenue at the junction of Lonsdale Way isn't working, and I was in complete darkness. There were loud noises of conversations at that point coming from the toddler play area. I was, that's why it's been put in the location, I think, I don't know. But against the evidence, Alan Walters, who was once a town councillor, on the 14th of January, made a recommendation to the council. Well, he made a report, and I've just highlighted this bit, that's why the report came in. "No recommendation is made, but members may be minded to support either one or both of these cameras", that's one in Cuts Close and one at Royce's Rec. "...up to a maximum budget or percentage of cost subject to support being requested. An indicative capital figure may be between £3,000 and £5,000 in total for each site, depending on the camera type chosen. There then remains an issue as to the future maintenance support for which we may, that's Oakentown Council, may receive a request to increase the support." That was on the 14th of January. "Council minutes on the 11th of February, read. It was proposed by councillor, Mrs Jane Woodcock, seconded by councillor John Noel, and agreed with seven votes for and one abstention. Members felt they were unable to give a decision due to a lack of specification, and request that a presentation is given by Rutland County Council." That was on the 11th of February. No presentation was given. No consultation was sought from Oakentown Council or the residents. The pole appeared. Info from Don Hawker's, "Some residents complained over the bank holiday, I had a very busy bank holiday. When I asked people, there were some who agreed that the pole should stay. I can't believe what I'm going to say next. Two had never even noticed it, and some were very much against it." Where do we go from here? Cabinet the 17th of March, and I'm going to read it out to you because it needs to be read. So bear with me. This is council jargon, very modern. This was from the Cabinet on the 17th of March. "CCTV systems are an important tool in the prevention and detection of crime and antisocial behaviour. The improvements to CCTV coverage will contribute to the council's strategic aim of creating a safer community for all, and the safer Rutland partnership aims of reducing crime and antisocial behaviour. They will also assist in discharging the council's duty under the Crime and Disorder Act of 1998 to do all that it reasonably can to prevent crime and disorder. The community safety people will move the pole. They have suggested that it goes in the footway, which is about a metre's in movement. This will obstruct..." "The base of the pole is bigger by a bit than a telegraph pole, so it will be in the footway, just a metre from where it is. So we've got the option, leave it there or get it moved up. That's the fait accompli, I think. They're putting 16 poles across Oakham, of varying sizes. One's gone up in Southwick, if you've noticed. The original suppliers ceased trading two and a half years ago, and so this is an upgrade of all CCTV cameras in Oakham. There is much more information to be had about the Cabinet decision. I am very cross, I have to say, chairman, that we were not consulted, and there are some members of the safety team who still insist that they came and spoke to us. They did not. They have not consulted with the residents, and I just leave it now to the council to decide and debate. Thank you."
Thank you, councillor Lucas. Can I have the installation from the right source? Yes, yes, please.
Mine's much shorter, actually, but with respect. I have to say, give reasons why I'm not supported at the moment. For the first time tonight, I've had this technical brief put in front of me. I can't possibly digest that tonight and make an informed decision. Also, I think before we go ahead and make a decision, we should have a member from the county council here, probably Mr Crouch, to actually explain exactly what it is where we can all ask questions. There's certainly questions that I would want to ask, and I need to know more detail before I can possibly vote for the actual installation of a camera. Thank you, Chair.
I have one here, which is not as long as George's, but slightly longer than Stan's, please. I think it's important that we, the residents, are the ones that should have been consulted before we were consulted. I think that the fact that Rutland County Council haven't consulted the residents or Oakentown Council is very annoying, and equally annoyed. When it was said by somebody at the council that if we're asked to move it, we'll move it from where it is onto the footway, that comment at the very least is provocative, and straight away causes a degree of, why say that? Why sort of states on it which says it's no point in challenging it? So, on those grounds alone, I would challenge it. I believe that, and I didn't want to mention his name, but since you said it first, that Hugh Crouch has a very maverick approach to how he runs things in the council. And sometimes I think that he runs the council.
I'm glad you said that before me, sorry.
I think that Hugh Crouch needs to be reminded that he's not the chief constable of Rutland County. And in that fact, it is a result of Hugh Crouch that our skateboard contractor lost money because he made a decision about council property and responsibilities without letting the council know then. So there is a clear historic line where this individual at the county council seems to make decisions, unilateral decisions, once again, something which this town council has been criticised before. And on that grounds, I'll challenge it back as well. I think that we should reject this retrospective planning. I think that we should bounce it back to Rutland County Council where they first of all consult, and we're from the use of the community help, that they do a consultation in the community hub with the residents, because I support the idea of moving it. It would concern me that moving it from one end of the pavement to the other end of the pavement may alienate people at the other end. And it's important that all voices that are there, and then you've got people on Cold Oakham Road, because then you'd have cameras looking into the rear of properties, which could be even more of an issue. So I think that we should contact Rutland County Council, give the opportunity where they have a consultation in our building up there, invite all the residents and representatives from this town council. And that once the county council and then the residents reach a compromise, that then the county council go by the rule book and approach the town council and ask permission. and approach the town council and ask permission. Because we do not have an issue with people putting the pole on our land. But I think they need to do it the right way. This isn't the right way. So I would reject it strongly. And even to the point that if they choose to move it onto the tarmac, I'm sure that the residents and a few councillors, we can be provocative and we will probably make sure that that doesn't happen. Thank you, chairman.
Is there any more to try and let Joyce come back? Councillor Brooks?
Yes, I probably didn't have as many residents as Joyce complaining to me. But thank you Joyce for the information you've given us this evening. And that was very informative. My problem with this is very similar to what Mr Lowe has said. There's been no consultation with the residents. Residents have come to me and I've said, I don't know what's going on. The first time I know about four locations is this evening when we've been handed this 10 minutes before the meeting, which I think is appalling.
That's my fault, actually, mine.
Well, I should retract that and just say that it's not helpful, sorry. But I also had a phone call from Mr Crouch and I'm glad that Mr Lowe said what he said. Then I won't have to say so much. But I got the impression during the phone call that from Rutland County Council, perhaps I shouldn't say his name too many times, that we were being difficult. And it was being put there for the benefit of Oakham Town Council. Halfway through the conversation, I had to say to Mr Crouch, excuse me, but I've had quite a few residents contact me that are a bit irate. I don't expect this from Rutland County Council. Are you annoyed with me? That's as far as it went. And he said no. But it was very clear that he wanted the camera where it was and that was it. It was our benefit, it was for the residents. And that he quite falsely told people that there would be ways of blocking it and so they weren't observed. And I didn't like the manner of the way it was dealt with. Now, this evening, I believe we can vote and send a good message to Rutland County Council, the fact that they haven't consulted, let alone with the residents, the council of this town. And it should be stalled, you know, and reconsidered. There is a need possibly for CCTV in the area. I, like Joyce, have seen photographs. I've actually seen on social media. They're not youth, some of them are actually adults that are on the swing. And it might be funny to them, but they don't realise what it's costing. I think each time the swing's broken, it's cost the council over £2,000 to replace it, you know. So it's not children, it is adults who have been drinking. And there's plenty of examples on social media. But I'm wondering, would a camera stop it? Because I... Well, I don't want to argue, but I've watched programmes on television and people commit crimes in cities and towns under cameras. The thing is, it has to be monitored. And the other thing is when we... Joyce has mentioned about costs and things. This council's paid a lot of money to Rutland County Council for the last four to five years for a CCTV system that has never, ever been to a standard, although it costs many hundreds of thousands of pounds, it has never been to a standard where it can be used in court. It's not been... We've had members who have been on the CCTV committee reporting that it's not been properly monitored. So I think it's a bit cheeky that they suggest that we would want to contribute when we've contributed over the years to a failed system. But, sorry to go on, but I think the important thing is we should vote this evening to take this pole down. And then Rutland County Council should consult with the residents and ourselves.
Councillor Lucas?
I was about to say coral Hugh Crouch. Because it's not only him that has decided this. And I think, and if anybody on Princess Avenue heard me on Bank Holiday Monday shouting at Alan Walters like a fishwife, he should be made accountable for this as well because he is on the same group. Mark Oxley from Uppingham is on the same group. So I think they need to be accountable for the whole shebang, really. I wouldn't go as far as to say it's got to be taken down. Leave it where it is for the time being and fight it. And let's get it in the right place for what we need.
I'll come back to Mr Romney. Councillor Brooks?
Alan did speak to me last night on the phone and he does admit that they've got it wrong.
Absolutely.
If that's helpful to members.
And I just turned around and shouted at him down the Princess Avenue.
Well, I didn't shout at him, but he's calmed up this evening.
Are there any members of councillor Lucas and councillor Brooks who wish to speak?
No, I've said...
I'll make a proposal when you're ready.
Councillors, I must admit that having heard the deputation from gentleman, surely this must be referred to the residents for their opinions before anything else happens? Because otherwise we put the cart before the horse. So I think a meeting needs to be caused for residents with RCC representatives there and then it should be taken from there. So time being, leave it where it is, get the meeting, get a decision made, get RCC involved, get them to explain it and if necessary, move it.
Any other members wish to speak? Mr Romney, you must come back.
If I may, what you're saying is correct. I mean, you need to protect your property. The pole where it is, although you will see vandalism taking place, you will not be able to bring in prosecutions because you do not have a face recognition on the large swing, for instance, which is over 60 metres away from the pole. So we're not against the CCTV. We understand the reason for it going in. What the residents are against is the fact that it's in the wrong place for it to actually work to its full potential. If you're spending thousands of pounds on this camera, get it right. I did speak to David Brown and he did say that he would move it. I have spoken to Hugh Crouch as well and I wasn't happy with him. So that's why I went to David Brown, I went to book him. And my next step after that would be the chief executive and that's going to be the onwards of it if I don't get the correct outcome on this. But from what you're saying, we are very grateful that it does look like you're going to reject it and we hope that's what you will do.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'll do that discussion and I have a proposal.
Yeah, picking up on what everyone said there. So the proposal is that the application, the retrospective application is rejected. The second part of the proposal is that Rutland County Council hold a consultation with residents at the community hub with ward members. The third part, if we need one, is that RCC then submit planning for either the current location if it's decided to leave it there or an agreed alternative location if on OTC land regardless of where you're heading.
I'll back on that.
Just a minute, hang on.
So that's pretty much it. You've spoken twice already.
No, it's about the proposal.
You've seconded it already.
No, no, amendment.
Oh, go on then.
That Rutland County Council have a consultation for all the wards because I think there's going to be issues with all the wards, not just that ward. Once the cameras start appearing down Burley Road, there's three.
We've only got one on the agenda tonight, which is the one...
I know, but you could... If they could ask for a public consultation for Oakham CCTV rather than a specific ward and open to anybody who has a...
The three bits of that proposal I'd leave as it is, on the back of what Martin said, probably four would be that the chairman advises RCC that they might want to do a wider consultation so they don't have future problems. But whether that needs to be part of this, I don't know.
I can, yeah. Right behind behalf to chairman, to the chief executive of Rutland County Council.
Seconded.
Already seconded. All those in favour of that proposal? You know, thanks very much. Ladies and gentlemen, fully. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Please stay if you wish. It was just, we brought it forward so we didn't have to delay. But we'd love to have you stay if you wish. Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Let's move on. That was easy. Sorry. To item nine, which is the recommendations from Street Council. Councillor Mills, are you with this one?
Just say, if you read the report, shall we read it?
Have I taught you underwear? Pink one? Can I explain underwear, do you mean?
Yes. Right.
Or my colour, or Adam's, what about that?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Turn to the little pink paper you've got, which I hope you've all read, recommendations from Streets Council. Initially, my failure is solved from Richard. Spend a lot of time on that. Since the financial group was reformed, then Richard, councillor Hayden, has solved a stump some time on it. We have worked our way through it. And I think, if I'm right, Richard, under your... You're the reporter, Richard, that's right.
Must have done hardly. Not a bit.
That's right. So anyway, you've got supporting paperwork at the back, which we've been through together with the reports at the front. So what I'm recommending is that the actual items listed in this particular report dated the 9th of September, recommendations from Streets is adopted by the council. Having said all that, the working group is currently working through a whole lot of issues on the finance table on the finance working group side of it. It's not all complete. But as far as we've got so far, we've adopted these measures as Richard has outlined in his paper.
Can I just clarify, your proposals here tonight are concerned about the six recommendations from Streets included in paragraph two key issues. Those are the six. Okay, which answers those recommendations in relation to the council. Any questions? Councillor Brooks?
Okay. Yes, I've read this and I made a couple of marks. I'm a bit concerned about number... Is it number 2.12 where it is recommended? Sorry, Chris. I'm concerned about the recommendation that we don't implement one of the most important parts of the report, which the tools are blamed for the situation we found ourselves in. I believe that the office could go out and buy some software. We're not like a business. There's not a huge amount in volume of work. And I think that so we're not in a position where there could be errors or problems at the end of this year. I think that that proposal should be rejected and software should be purchased and implemented as soon as possible. You know, it's some... I don't understand the reason for the delay. Then the other thing is in 2.21, authorisation for work required under the council's financials regulations, currently between £1,000 and £2,000, should be in written form and again attached to the work order. As an additional control, if one member does not consent to the work being carried out, it will be referred to council or committee as appropriate. I think I know what that means, but it's not clear and forgive me if I'm wrong. But does that suggest that some members are going to check that and if they're not happy, they're going to refer it to full council? Who are they or what is that? Because my confusion is that if it's authorised, who are the people? It doesn't seem very clear to me.
Do I need to go over that?
After the 2.1.
And then there was one final quick note. I think you should have included something about a separate register, which is a legal requirement for the staff payroll. That's an HMRC.
Yeah, we've got all the records.
But it must be a separate record from council accounts. It's an HMRC requirement that payroll is separate from council accounts. It is, because then you've changed something which I've mentioned later in the payments.
Councillor, can I answer 2.12?
Yeah, on 2.12. The reason behind the fact that the best is for the time being is that we've charged the clerk with obtaining some costings for the extra package that we require to bring the account package up to standard. So at the moment, it's only to the one specific... You're only using one specific methodology. The idea of buying the second package is to increase that, so it covers all aspects. So it's income and expenditure, receipts and payments. They can do it either or both ways. So when Richard comes back with a costing on, that will be so which way to go with it. But it's never leaving in and getting one and finding out there's a better one. So the ones listed on there are the ones described to us by Streets with no particular recommendation. So we need to sort of ascertain for ourselves which is the best fix for the system at the moment. So that's what we intend to do. And as soon as Richard's got the pricing, we'll bring that back to council and decide which way we want to go with it.
Richard, 2.1?
Yeah, just going back to 2.2.1. Authorisation for work required under regulations between £1,000 and £2,000 I am required to consult with councillor Lucas and councillor Mills. Okay? And the added control that the group felt should be in there was that if either of them were unhappy with the justification that I put forward for incurring that expenditure, then it would come to the council committee as appropriate. Obviously, if neither of them were, then it would come to council. So that's the caveat there. That's the checking balance there. Okay, that's why that is there.
And the other point, councillor Brooks, around the very end?
I'm not sure what council probably is talking about with this separate register.
It's under... Sorry, if I can just say, it's under the HMRC website to do with employees. And it's very clear. And I don't want to talk about what you've done, which is an improvement, until we get to that point on the schedule of payments. But it's all to do with privacy rights of employees and things like that, which we should be aware of. It's been brought up before, but at that time, people have said we're not particularly too worried. But it is a requirement that separate registers or accounts are kept for payroll.
Okay, when we get on to item nine, which is the blue paper. If you look page one to the...
Yes, I wasn't sure about that.
Six from the first.
What is headed?
It's headed up, general.
Continued.
General continued, it says.
There's two of those.
Yeah, and the first, the top item, there's income controls. There's... Everybody got that? Everybody got that page? Income controls. There's a top white top left, okay? If you go down there to payroll controls and the fourth bullet point under payroll controls, necessary systems to be in place, real-time information, submissions to Majesty's Revenue and Customs, that's under payroll. So there are systems in place to make sure that we do have the right and correct records complying with HMRC regulations for staff payroll. In terms of privacy, obviously, if we're going to do an audit, then at least two or three of us on the finance working group will need to access those records to ensure that things are being done correctly. It's actually another issue. She's wanting to cut us off.
If I can just come back. Yeah, I understand, I'm not disputing that you're doing the payroll wrong or anything like that. It is just very clear that it must be separate. And the reason for that is is that at any time, HMRC can come and inspect And the reason for that is, is that at any time, HMRC can come and inspect, and they don't want to go through the council or a business accounts, because it's mainly geared towards businesses, but when they say, if you look under employees, so that it should be separate from your general accounts. That's all it's about.
I really just, I don't understand that at all. We have all of the payroll records. Every month, we submit something under real-time information on the day that we are paid that automatically goes to HMRC. We have all payroll records are separate, in a separate file with headed salaries with all of the calculations. I've got to be honest, Martin, I don't actually know what you mean by a separate register.
Well, separate accounts.
You can't separate the accounts. You've seen this somewhere in the council.
Okay, but then you then identify to Clark.
I raised it with Richard some time ago when there was questions about his pay being put into public domain.
Bring it in, show it to him, then he'll be clear.
I'll look it up again.
If you could, Martin, because I just don't actually understand where you are.
It's all on the website where you get information from the government to do with VAT and everything.
Right, okay, anybody else, any other person, any points to raise on that? Okay, and those who have learned to accept the recommendations contained in the report.
Are we not doing them individually, because I can't vote for it with that one about...
Okay, can I take proposal for item 2.12 then first, proposal for that?
I'll propose it, it seems up.
Okay, second? Okay, councillor Hayley, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, against, one. Do you want it noted?
Yes, please. Clearly, because I did do that.
Item 2.21, all those in favour? Sorry, I have a proposal for that, don't jump the gun. Councillor... Seconded by councillor Mills, all those in favour? Unannounced. Proposal for recommendation 2.31. Councillor Stubbs, seconded, councillor Hayley, all in favour? Unannounced. Recommendation 2.41, proposal. Councillor Mills, second, councillor Hayley, all those in favour? Unannounced. 2.51, proposal. Don't get bashful. Councillor Low, seconded, councillor Stubbs, all those in favour? Oh, and that's all right? Are you okay?
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine, yeah.
Take more than six.
I'm just keeping a clear for it.
Okay. Recommendation 2.61, proposal. Councillor Hayley, second, councillor Brooks, was that? Are you seconded? No, I saw your answer. Okay, councillor Brooks, all those in favour? Unannounced. Thank you very much. Right. System of internal controls. Okay, Clark to do it. Yeah, that's councillor Mills, he's got himself out on the line.
Okay, what you've, you've got quite a lot of this, I'm afraid. The primary driver behind this is on the first page of the report. Financial management of the body is adequate and effective, and the body has a sound system of internal control, the body being obviously Oakham Town Council. Local councils are required to have a system of internal control. The key part of that is to review its effectiveness, okay? Now, to obviously review the effectiveness of something, you've got to have something there in the first place. So, finance, financial matters, and we'll just call it the finance group, it's far easier. Went through all of this, it is based on information that was provided by the internal auditor, and his initial report will be coming to you for the next council meeting. And what he suggested is that systems of internal control should be separated out from risk management. And as you're all aware, we're seeing somebody to do with risk management very, very shortly. So systems of internal control, again, based on what the internal auditor has said. You've got them all there. These go along with the financial regulations, but they're also over and above that. They take into account also what has just been agreed as regards the Streets' recommendations. And there is just one thing I would like to point out, fraud. You have, which is two pages from the back, you've got a duplication there, my apologies, nobody picked it up on it. Internet transfer of funds from external account. So there it is, really. All of those will be sort of put in place, particularly as regards payment controls. Very much tightening up on those. The work orders are attached to invoices that members see. But there has to be a written authority if it's from Joyce and Paul. If one of them isn't happy, it comes back to council or committee. Obviously, no blank checks assigned, you've got them all there. Random checking of work orders to make sure that obviously the work has been done, that's all going to get signed off. Pretty much, you know, where we need to be. And one of the other things is random checks by members of the finance group. So they can come in at any time, you know, without notice, obviously make sure, you know, I mean, if we're not, if nobody in the office, hard luck, I'm sorry, but the idea would be that they can come in and say, Richard, show us the financial records. So, you know, we think we've covered most of it there. But it's a question of whether members can think of anything else that needs to go in there. And the idea would be that this goes in place as from tomorrow. And then in March, members will get another report saying, yes, that works, that works, that works. And then you've got a measure of how effective it has been.
Any comments? That's all good.
Yeah, I think it's four pages in with the electronic banking. I raised a question on the thing about transfers between council accounts to ensure sufficient funds are available to meet financial commitments, do not require authorisation. Now, forgive me, Richard, if I'm wrong, you will correct me. I had a discussion with Richard, which touched on his training, and he reported to me or spoke to me about a horror story, which I won't go into the details. But it did involve a clerk, I believe, who was transferring money and taking it out, or something like that. So I think that we should have, whether it's a slip of paper just saying that the money is going the same way as other transfers, that any movement of council money, because if we did have a situation of different staff and they were filtering out ten thousand pounds a week, you know, or something like that, it wouldn't show until we got the statements. So it would be a safeguard that the people would know, that they just have to talk to the finance people who sign slips to say, money is being transferred to this account for that purpose. If that's, if I made sense.
I'm not sure what the proposal now.
Well, an amendment to this, that it is required, authorisation is required for, and I believe there is something else coming up with the Cambridge Building Society, where we are going to put a safeguard in, I don't know whether that should be added there, that they're going to receive a signed letter from us that cheques are only made payable to Oakham Town Council. And I'm wondering if that was the appropriate report to have that added to as well.
Richard, there's certain bullet points in that.
It's the last one on the, it's on the electronic banking.
Yeah, the one that Martin's referring to, transfers between council accounts. This is usually between council's deposit account with HSBC and its current account. And there's more money in the deposit account because it pays a small amount of interest. And we transfer money across between those two accounts only to, if we know that there is going to be, you know, we're going to run out of money, basically. Obviously, the transfers you then go and report of at the end of the month. You've got that on the last page of the bright yellow, you've got a list of the transfers there. And also the transfers will be part of the random checks that a member of the finance working group will be making to say, we're going to run out of money in a couple of days. Can we transfer ten thousand pounds, quite happy to put that in. But as with most things that the council does as regards its payments, it would be retrospective if nobody could come in and authorise it. So it's up to members. I mean, I'm quite happy to, that they will require authorisation, but it's just the mechanics of how that authorisation is given.
Okay, can you go back and get that in the report back?
Well, I mean, it's fairly simple. I think either members say that they trust us, myself and Alison, which obviously while I was off, Alison was transferring money between the deposit account and the current account to cover the council's financial commitments. Or there's a mechanism in place, whether that's a phone call, an email, whatever, I don't know. But we put a copy, we print a copy of the transfer off. That goes in the folder with the bank reconciliations, which are being checked every month. I'm not quite sure. Yeah, yeah, that's all part of it, those are all part of the financial records that the members should be checking. I need to, or Alison needs to check and get something signed to say, yes, you can transfer ten thousand pounds. I'm not entirely sure how you would go about that in a practical sense, that's my...
Councillor Mills.
From a banking background, purely a question of risk. If, all we're saying at the moment is that Alison or Richard transfer between the current account and the deposit account, or vice versa, I can't see any risk of fraud there. If on our monthly cheque and reconciliation of the accounts, we actually look at the transfers between the two accounts and make sure that they match up in the words, the debit from the deposit appears as a credit in the current account, that would suffice, I believe, for a full cheque. No, it's not, let's go into a third party, and it's only moving between the actual council accounts. So there's nothing I can see which would put us at risk, to be quite honest. But if councillor Brooks is concerned about it, we can add it to our list of monthly cheques and just say, for the previous month, go through all the encounters and make sure it's gone between current and deposit, the deposit and current, and hasn't anywhere else.
No, I'd be happy, it was only because of the horror story I was told. And I think what it does is, well, I've worked in retail most of my life, and you basically don't do something on your own. We're in a unique situation when they're handing cash, it's not cash, but it is money, where people can handle it on their own. And I think it's to take away the risk element is to just have those safeguards in the case where the person was transferring money over, because that's like the open door to the current account. You can't actually go into the bank and take it out of the deposit account. It just seemed after hearing the story that it would be a safeguard just to change that. So if then, if you are going to put something else, to put cheques, then I would be happy with that. But to me, I don't see it as a difficulty for somebody to just pick up the phone or can you sign later to say that I am transferring to the council account.
Okay, thanks very much.
If we're coming in to do a reconciliation. No, I'm quite happy, if it becomes part of our monthly reconciliation cheque, then that's fine.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, I might just raise one, which I was listening to the radio in the car the other day, and that was a dangerous thing to do. There was a discussion about a scam that happened, where some work had been completed. And the scammers, I'd actually designed a very good invoice from the company that had done the work, sent it in before the company's invoice went in with a different bank account. And I think, well, how are we going to counter that? I know, it's possibly a one-off, but you know, that one-off might be open.
How would they know the exact amount if they weren't involved in any of the finances?
I don't know. What we have. There could be people working in that, just a minute. There could be people working with that company who are also part of the scams. So, I mean, it is possible, yeah. Richard, something?
It is in there.
Is it? Can we do that? Okay, if only somebody might have drawn along.
It's where, it's definitely in here where any electronic banking, any notification of a change in banking details by an organisation paid by electronic banking, basically, must be verified as per council's financial regulations, which is by either two members or myself and another member. And apparently, this is actually becoming more and more prevalent, that companies are targeting local authorities, perhaps not at our level, but local authorities, the principal councils are spending hundreds and thousands, if not millions, and saying, we have changed our bank details, and in the hope that the council will send the money to them. And the point about it is that if we get any notification of that, we don't do anything until we've actually verified that that is the case.
Okay, so before, when we issue an order, so we issue it to a company who's not used before, do we get their bank details before we do the work?
No, because in most cases, they're paid by cheque.
What if it's by BACS?
A BACS payment has to be authorised initially by resolution of the council. Part of the training that I, training day I went on last Thursday, and is enshrined in here, is that you don't get rid of the cheques unless you've got a very, very good reason to get rid of them. For instance, we have to pay HMRC by BACS because they won't accept any other way of paying. You have various direct debits, these were authorised by the council some time ago. One of the recommendations is that we look at those during, at the end of the year. Every two years, you look at your list of direct debits, there are very, very few of them that are actually paid. For instance, I mean, the one that possibly springs to mind is that we get a letter from Victoria Hall saying we've changed our bank details. You know, I mean, it's not an insignificant amount of money that we paid for Victoria Hall. And, you know, we would then, you know, have our ways and means of checking that.
So you'd check anything which would change it?
Yeah, if we had notification of, from a supplier that we pay electronically, that we would seek to verify before we paid it. And that's in that.
Okay, that's fine.
And to the financials.
Yes, very clear. I'm just looking back through this, and I can retract my requests for the cheques from the building societies, because I've had the conversation, and there's been a lot to read, and I can see that that has been included. And with regard to your point, a very good point about the scam, because only, I think it was last year, Rotherham County Council fell foul of exactly the same scam, and they lost a lot of money on it. So it could be good that perhaps Richard would contact them to find out what they put in place to stop it.
It would be me and A, other men, or whoever. The idea being that, one of the things that the finance group is going to also be looking at is this area of dual authority. Because that is the, with electronic banking, that is the biggest risk. If fraud, I could, you know, take, there's a daily limit of how much I could take out into my own account or account somewhere else. But if there was a other person that had to authorise that, that would completely eliminate that risk. So that's something that finance is looking at, and how we can get a dual authority in place, where I can action it, but it has to be authorised by somebody else.
I think you've done that with your slips of payments.
That's retrospective.
I'm just allowed to do that. Okay, can I have a proposal to accept the document systems of internal control? Thank you. Jasmine? All those in favour?
Unannounced, just without one deletion.
Okay, the next item is Oakham Cemetery, that's all right.
Very straightforward, at the moment, you know, we're in talks with Rotherham County Council about taking over responsibility for the cemetery. This meeting, the minutes here are from July, we've had another meeting since then where the minutes are attached. Alls it is, is to progress to the next stage, is that the current people that are on it, myself, Joyce and Stan, we're a committee, and it needs to be a working group to make it more appropriate, apparently. So all the recommendation is, A is to acknowledge the report, to bring you all up to speed, and B, that the committee becomes a working group, which is a dual purpose role, really. And it's as simple as that.
Right. Can I have a proposal regarding the present members of the Oakham Joint Management Committee become the cemetery working group? Councillor Stubbs, second, councillor Mills, all in favour? Unannounced, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman.
The next one is Traffic Commune on Bronson Road, which is a financial committee. The next one is traffic calming on Bronson Road, which is a financial committee. Okay, and this is in, um, northwest ward. Are there any northwest members who speak to this?
Well, I'm north west staff, but.
Go right down the middle.
Yeah, yeah, but it's a houses.
Um, I don't really want to say a lot, to be honest. There's a handout that's gone around, various comments from the public. I'd just really like to urge the councillors to support. I know it seems quite, quite ambiguous with there being one kind of set. But where does it say? A general review of traffic calming. They are considering a set crossing. I've been told that's going to go to Cabinet in November. But there are other traffic calming measures that a lot of people want to see in place, the yellow line, speed reduction. And ultimately, it affects all four wards because people travel across town. It's the co-op has increased the traffic. And you'll notice there's even people outside of Oakham that come into work that have commented. And the second accident actually included a gentleman that lives in Leicester, runs a shop in Oakham, has travelled that junction for ten years.
Okay.
Is it really?
Okay, thank you very much.
To support it.
So, unless there's anybody with a burning desire to speak, when we're looking at implementation of a twenty mile an hour speed limit and to write radar speed display signs, and also to confirm that the town council is in support of a general review of traffic calming measures on Bronson Road, whether it's northwest or southward. Can I have a proposal? And then, do you want to speak to it?
Yes, please.
Oh, sorry, come on.
Uh, it's just that this was discussed at length on Monday night. I mean, at length. Uh, there was everything from pedestrian crossings, taking pedestrian crossings away, making it a big roundabout, twenty mile an hour speed limit, tabletop, uh, installations, you name it. They thought of everything, the neighbourhood watch. I think we've got to support the, the Bronson Road Action Group, is that right, expression? I don't know what we are.
We're, we're, we're.
I did actually, uh, ask if it could go on the strategic.
Plan.
Plan. Uh, it's about quarter past six this morning. Uh, and I think we really ought to be supporting the residents, both sides of the road, and the pedestrians and the children going to, uh, South.
Catmas.
Catmas Academy, or whatever.
Catmas Primary.
Primary Academy. Uh, it is academy, you see.
It is.
Uh, um.
School.
School. Thank you. Uh, and I'm, I'm thinking we're a bit lax that we weren't in it in the first place, you know, to help support, because this has been going on long enough, ever since the convenience store, uh, you know.
So are you proposing that, uh,
Yeah.
an implementation of the twenty mile speed limit and the radar.
No, no, the council's already supported those.
Oh, supported, okay, sorry. It's just to confirm that the town council is supportive of a general review of traffic calming measures.
Yes.
Your, your proposal?
Yes, I'll.
Second?
As I usually, an awful lot.
Okay.
I second it.
All those in favour? Thank you very much. Well, she would pay him. Okay. Comments, please, on offence F, councillor Brooks?
Yes, um, the first one was the one I alluded to earlier, um, and that's to do with the, um, payroll and salary. I'm now pleased to see that the council is complying with the required law and not identifying individual members of staff salaries within the public domain. It's taken a long time, but we seem to have got there overnight. Um, the other thing I raised, um, previous meeting of the council is items one five six, one five seven, and one seven four. The law says that the preset can't be used for charitable purposes. It must only be used for the benefit of the residents of the parish. And also, the, 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 you know, I've raised, I'll repeat myself, you know, we're probably the only parish council in the area now that actually pays to go to events. And we shouldn't be using public money for the mayor to attend events. And specifically, when these are listed as the Lifeboat Branch and the Royal British Legion. I'm not against the charities getting money, but that is the law. We cannot support financially charities. Um, and then the biggest payments, obviously, which are an issue to me, is one six four and one six five, which is the skate park. Correctly, the council authorised that payment could go ahead once the work is completed. I gave up my time after that meeting and had a meeting with the clerk and pointed out a number of defects. The clerk said, when I mentioned about authorisation of payment, that, well, we haven't paid them yet, we'll, you know, we'll get it sorted. I've not heard anything back. The defects are still there and the company's been paid. The public are criticizing the defects still, and I'd like to know why they've been paid, because it's clear to me that once someone's paid, they're not going to come back and repair those defects.
Thank you. Any other points? Okay, no proposals to accept, um, thanks, Lister. Share your findings.
Oh, please.
Second, second. All in favour? Against?
I'm abstaining on the financial things until they're properly changed.
Same as the council. Any comments? Welcome. Okay, come on, first, let's accept the same accounts. Propose? Also low, seconded. Councillor Sturrock, all in favour?
Yeah.
Abstaining or not?
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Okay. Um, next one, the town council representative for Rutland Access Group. That member was proposed in the, at, at May when we set out on this council, therefore no decision was made. So, um, we're looking now for a representative for the Rutland Access Group. Anybody wish to propose or self-propose?
Here, Jasmine.
Yeah.
Would you like to?
Um, yeah, I think just, um, a little bit of background for members here. They meet, uh, quarterly. The last meeting, um, happened about a week ago, so they won't be meeting again until December. It is usually during the day. So, uh, but it, as I say, just meets once a quarter.
Yes, I propose.
Jasmine, second. Thank you, councillor Sturrock, all in favour? Thank you very much.
Are you voting for yourself there, Jasmine?
Sorry.
You're voting.
I'm just abstaining.
Sorry.
Nobody supports me, so.
The next one is the town council representative, the trustees of Victoria Hall. You recall that this was deferred from the last meeting and that the Victoria Hall refused to accept councillor Brooks as a representative of the council. So now we need to make a decision. Um, first one is to withdraw councillor Brooks in that position, and the second one is to appoint a new member. Okay, anybody wish to make any comments?
Yeah, um, can I make a comment? That when the agenda is set, it should have clear reports and things. You, 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 you've not actually said at any point, you're suggesting to remove me. So that can't be considered as a proposal.
So to make any decisions, to discuss the issue and to make any decisions as appropriate.
But I think when you're doing something as drastic as removing someone that you quite kindly appointed, um, it should have been clearly defined there.
The, the point is, it's not us that are, that are turning down to Victoria Hall. We, we appointed you in good faith.
Yes, I, I, I understand that, but then there was consultation where it's caused a lot of problems and friction amongst myself and a member. And I, I personally have the view that we should leave it. There's only one more meeting left this year. And, um, appoint someone next year, just out of principle, you know, it just doesn't, there is no point in appointing someone just for the last meeting of the year.
Thank you. Any comments? Councillor Brooks.
That might be a very important meeting, the last meeting of the year, so let's appoint another representative who wants to stand as the rep.
Second.
Is what I'm saying.
Okay.
If, if my, if councillor Brooks doesn't want to withdraw, or it's a fait accompli, so we've got to have somebody who will be representing Oakham Town Council there, so let's appoint another one then, as well. Or whatever.
Any other comments for that councillor Brooks, though?
Sorry, second.
Any other? You just spoke.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Mrs Lucas has a good point there. The trustee, who didn't know anything about this, told me that we should have two members, and if it was so important, the meetings that go on there, then why wasn't this sorted so people could have attended? I think it was last week's meeting.
So can I, can I?
Councillor Sturrock.
Thank you, Chair. It's, it's been, it's been made quite clear, not by us, but by, uh, the trustees of Victoria Hall, uh, that they will not accept councillor Brooks. Now, you know, whether we accept it or not, that's, that's their decision. And there's, no, we can't, we can't do anything about that. And I think we've got to move on and make an appointment of, of, of a, a member that they will accept.
If I can just.
Yeah, I'd just like it one more time.
If I can just say that this was not a decision made by the full board of trustees. They didn't know about it. It was made by the chairman and the secretary of the, of the committee. It had nothing, it was not an agenda item. So formally, I have not been officially rejected by the trustees of Victoria Hall. You may have a letter that says that, but I have it of a good authority from one of the trustees that it was not an agenda item and was not, he didn't even know that they'd made that decision, the two people who were involved.
I, I think we're not into the, looking into the machinations, the workings of the Victoria Hall trustees.
Well, I think we should just appoint a second person.
Please, please, please. What we have is a letter from the Victoria Hall, from the chairman of the.
No, the secretary.
From the trustees, stating that fact. Um, that is the situation. They will not accept councillor Brooks on their trustees, so that's where we stand. And we've now got to decide whether we, um, remove councillor Brooks in that position and appoint somebody else. Decision is yours.
Does anybody actually want it? Because if, I don't want to get into a fight. If anybody wants it, then I will, I will step down. But from my view, it's no one wants it.
Councillor Brooks?
Yeah.
Councillor Brooks, now you've been a member of this council twice, and you've been attending meetings, so you know exactly the procedure. If you want to speak, you put your hand up and you ask them.
Okay, I'll, to say it formally, if there is a member who wants to do it, then I will consider retracting. But I point out that there is only one more meeting, and I'm very disappointed that the council is taking the view that I should be kicked off when correct procedure wasn't even followed in the first place by an outside organisation. But, yeah, I don't want to be fighting people on something which, it's sad to me because I'm interested in the arts and the community thing and the lack of use of Victoria Hall, and I hope whoever wants it is going to look at that and get the place used and opened to the public more than four months a year.
Okay. Okay. All our need, all the points. Councillor, councillor Sturrock first.
Oh, sorry.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry to sort of repeat myself, but it, it's out in our hands. We haven't made the decision. The trustees have made the decision, and there is a, a, a member who has indicated to me that he is quite willing to, to stand.
Okay. Councillor Lucas?
I, I just want to propose that very member.
Before, before we do that, can I?
Can we know who it is?
Councillor Brooks, we've already mentioned that. Who is it?
That's what we need to know who it is before I make my decision, what I'm going to do.
Can, can we have no cross-table chatter, please? Councillor Brooks, now I've already said to you, you know the procedure. Please abide by the procedure. Now, you've spoken three times now. Um, what I want to do then is to suspend the standing order before we vote on this. Uh, suspend standing order twelve, and I would require you to agree to the suspension standing order twelve in order to that. Item is now seventeen, I think, isn't it, after that plugged out list, so that, so that we can vote on it.
The reason for, if I can just clarify this, the rea- the reason for. The rea- sorry, the reason, the reason, um, uh, we, we've just got some advice on this. Um, obviously, the decision to appoint Martin was made at the end of May, okay? Now, if members are going to go down the route of rescinding that decision, then that is within six months, okay? Standing order twelve is a six-month rule, um, and the council is quite within its rights to suspend that so that it can consider this application. Basically, what you are doing is you're reversing a decision that you've already made. And the original decision was to appoint Martin as a, as a council representative.
So you want to propose?
I'm, I'm asking for a proposal to suspend standing order twelve to be able to vote on.
Before, before you do, can I ask, can I ask about, and I'm putting it so you won't have to do it. If I know who wants it, I will then decide very quickly whether, if it's, quite bluntly, if it's Mr Mills, then I would not, you will have to go through the process of chucking me off. If it's someone else on this council, then I will step down. Now, Mr Mills said he didn't want it last week.
Chairman, please. Can I ask if anybody's interested in?
I'm not, I'm, I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not interested in it. I'm just saying that can we stop playing games? Can we just get them to the dinner? Because that is ridiculous.
It's not. I'm, I'm, I'm offering to, I'm offering to step down if people are honest and open and transparent with me.
Can I, can I just ask?
Yes.
Is anybody interested in taking this position?
Who?
Councillor Hayley, you are, okay?
Okay, then can I stand up, please, and say that I would like it recorded, that I step down? And I would like to propose the councillor.
It's okay.
But, well, no, it wasn't proposed officially, or I'll second the proposal.
We'll accept councillor Brooks, um, standing down from that position, and therefore we need to, um.
And you can put regretfully step down.
Can you? Please. And just a minute, and we need then to, um, propose that, oh, councillor Hayley be proposed as.
Unanima, proportion.
I second.
I second it.
No, it's already been seconded by councillor Brooks, I think. Councillor Lucas, you are proposing councillor Hayley? Councillor Brooks is seconding.
Yes, I am.
Regretfully or not?
No, I resigned regretfully. I'm seconding in a positive manner that we can actually do.
Okay, so we have a seconder and a proposer.
Does that make sense?
Sorry, proposer and a second. We can't both talk together.
Sorry.
Um, so we've got a proposer for councillor Hayley and a second of councillor Hayley. All those in favour? You know, sure, it's good. Um.
Let's hope they want him.
Right, and the, uh, the final.
Do the same thing again.
Do the same thing again, I'm afraid. We need to suspend standing order twelve to discuss, um, item eighteen, which is the appointment of a member to the, to the, uh, neighbourhood planning working group. Can I have a proposal to suspend standing order twelve, I have some.
Yep.
Last candidate.
Second.
Okay. Okay, um, all in favour? All in favour? Thank you very much. You, you're unanimous?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, as you know, councillor Plankspires resigned and was a member of the neighbourhood planning working group. Um, do we have anyone who wishes to be nominated, self-nominated, or?
Please, please, only a moment, sorry.
Um, who's on? I've got, it's myself, I'm not, I'm on it.
Uh, yeah, Michael and me, I don't know.
Michael, just a third. Yeah, okay. Councillor Brooks?
I'd like to be nominated or.
You, you, you're proposing yourself?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second of councillor Brooks?
I'll second that.
You're second, thank you very much. Seconded by Adam. Um, anybody else wish to be nominated?
I'm happy for a ballot. If someone else wants it, don't sit.
We can vote. Yeah. Does anybody else wish to be nominated?
Proposer, uh, by councillor Brooks, second by councillor Hall.
You start, I pass seven.
Thank you.
It's all right, don't be anxious. Sorry, just a minute.
Yeah, proposer by, by councillor Brooks, second by Adam. I know that councillor Brooks is, uh, appointed to the neighbourhood planning working group. Are there any other members who wish to be?
Thank you very much, I can do that, yeah, yeah. Are there any members that can wish to be?
Summarising.
Nobody else? Okay.
All in favour?
All in favour? See, I don't think I've opened my mouth, no. Okay, all those in favour of councillor Brooks?
All are nominated, so I'll vote for Martin. That's two.
All those against?
Can I have an explanation of why?
Can you please, please stop? I've already mentioned the bad talk. Four against, all those in favour? Three abstentions.
I just find it absolutely.